Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I would like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me and on the small screen up in the public gallery. And please can you ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public, good evening. I would like to say that as a committee, we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, however, I would ask you to please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and of the committee and officers. Thank you. Now we move to the main items of business. And item one is the minutes, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 15th of June 2016 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I assign these as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Apologies of absence. Have there been any apologies for absence, Gary?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, we've received apologies for absence from councillor Brian Ellis, councillor Patricia Ellis, councillor Goodridge, and councillor Mike Band has advised us that he will be late arriving tonight due to a prior engagement.
Thank you. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Yes, councillor, and we've received a non pecuniary interest from councillors Stuart Stennett and Jeanette Stennett in relation to item B1 on the agenda, WA 2016 0783, as they have relatives who attend Cranley School. They have also declared a pecuniary interest in item B3, as they are the applicants. As a result, both will leave the chamber prior to consideration of that item. We have also received non pecuniary interests from councillor Mary Forzieski in regard to planning item B1, as she is the chairman of Cranley Parish Council and the former chairman of the Cranley Parish Council Planning Committee. And in relation to item 3, councillor Forzieski is also declaring a non pecuniary interest, as she knows the applicants of item B3, as they are fellow Waverley Borough councillors and former Cranley Parish councillors, and she is the chairman of Cranley Conservatives. And also, we just wanted to make a committee-wide non pecuniary interest, obviously, for members of the committee in relation to item 3 being fellow members of Waverley Borough Council, together with the applicants councillors Jeanette Stennett and councillors Stuart Stennett. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Do members have any other non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Item 4, have there been any questions received from members of the public, Gary?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of, Peter?
No updates today, thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Applications for planning permission. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 8th of August 2016, at a time to be agreed. And now we move to the planning applications for consideration this evening, and item 6.4, item B1, application reference WA oblique 2016 oblique 0783, Cranley School, Horseshoe Lane, Cranley, GU68QQ. Jennifer, if you'd like to introduce the application to the committee, please.
Thank you, chairman. This application is for the erection of extensions to an existing boarding house, including the provision of additional boarding following demolition of existing garage and workshops with associated works. West House, which is subject to the application here, is located within the grounds of Cranley School to the north of Horseshoe Lane, which runs down here. This area is the historic centre of the school, and the surrounding buildings to the site are used for teaching, boarding accommodation and sports activities. The site comprises a two-storey detached building, which has 64 boarding rooms to accommodate 117 students. There's also a workshop and garage on the site, which are here, which are proposed for demolition as part of this proposal. This is the proposed site plan. So Rhodes House is, would be this area here in grey. The areas for extension are the red parts of the building. So Rhodes House in grey would accommodate 75 students in 40 rooms, and the extension to the boarding house would accommodate 74 students in 44 boarding rooms. This would result in a total of 84 boarding rooms to accommodate 149 students. Additionally, the proposal seeks two extensions to the existing building, shown here in red and here in red, which would provide additional accommodation for the house and deputy house mistress or masters. The proposal also includes landscaping works and two decking areas, one is here and one is here. And these areas, which are marked C, would be private garden space for the house mistresses or masters. So these are the proposed floor plans. The areas which are coloured are the additional over the existing building. This is the proposed roof plan. These are the proposed elevations. I've highlighted and circled in red the extensions to the building. Further elevations. These are the sections which show the proposed decking areas. So this one here is decking just out to the rear of the proposed extension, and then the decking area down by the, on there. These are some photographs which just show the existing character of the building, A and B, and C are the buildings to be demolished. This photograph shows the existing building, and the extension would come out to the side And these photographs show the location of the smaller extensions, so A here would come out here, and B would come here. So the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development. The site is located within the countryside beyond the Green Belt, however, the NPPF gives great weight to the need to expand schools, and policy C2 of the local plan supports development within the countryside for the reasonable needs of education. Additionally, policy CF3 supports extensions to existing educational establishments. Also, there's educational needs, parking provision in highways, and flooding and foul drainage. At this point, I refer you to the update sheet on page 2. Following submission of further drainage calculations and information, the Leeds Local Flood Authority have confirmed they are satisfied the proposed sustainable drainage system would be acceptable. Following the response from the Leeds Local Flood Authority, the wording to condition 13 has been amended. The matters of planning judgment, which councillors are asked to consider this evening, are the impact on visual immunity, the impact on residential immunity, and the impact on the setting of the Grade 2 listed building. As such, officers recommend that permission be granted as set out on pages 75 to 83 of the agenda, and with amended condition 13, as shown on page 2 of the update sheet. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Jennifer. Right, now I open it up to members. No comment. Ah, sorry, councillor Forzieski.
Thank you, chairman. I just wanted to say to the officers, well done, it's a great report, and I fully endorse and support the recommendation before us. Thank you.
Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, chair. When I read these reports, one of the first things I always do is look at what the parish council views are, because I think it's a very important indicator, and Cranley Parish Council had no objection, so I always think that's a positive. I agree with my colleague, it's an excellent report, and I think we should be supporting our education establishments, so unless my colleagues say anything which will change that, I support the recommendations. Thank you, chair.
Yes, sorry. Councillor Henry.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I'd just like to concur with my fellow councillors, this is a very full report, the conditions would seem to cover all the actions and possible concerns that we may have had. And this application clearly demonstrates the success of Cranley School, which is indeed a flagship in the educational stratosphere for Waverley Borough Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last questions before we move on to the recommendation? Jolly good. So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 12 and 14 to 15, and informatives 1 to 10 as set out on the report, plus amended condition 13 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Councillor, you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's unanimous.
I might have been abstaining or objecting. Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. Excuse me. We haven't started with the A list, I didn't hear an explanation as to why we didn't. The A point, and members of the public are obviously looking slightly amused over there as to which was coming first. Sorry, we, it was decided that we would move through the B list first of all, because... Did I miss that comment? If I did, I apologise. No, you didn't, you didn't miss that comment, not from me, it hasn't been announced tonight, but councillor Mike Band was keen, was delayed at another committee meeting, was anxious to be here for one of the items that's coming up later on on the A list. Thank you for that, I was only asking because the members of the public were clearly... Yes, sorry, I should have explained that. ...trying to scrutinise through their papers and wonder where the hell they were. Sorry. Right, so we're moving on to item B2, WA 2016 0683, Allfold Farm, Lockswood Road, Allfold, GU68HP. Jenny, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please? Actually, for the members of the public, it's on pages 85 to 134 of the agenda, thank you.
The application before you tonight is for the change of use of the existing equestrian building containing one residential dwelling to provide seven additional dwellings. The first plan you have there is the location plan, just showing you where the existing building is here, and the existing parking area here. The aerial photograph is included, just so that you can see the area that's used by the horses for the equestrian business at the moment, and the application building is this one here. During discussions with the applicants, it was agreed that the area blocked in green would be kept as a landscaped buffer, that will make sure that there's a distinction between the parking spaces and the open lands that adjoins it. Just for information, this is the existing building, that will actually be clad with timber cladding as part of the proposal to improve the appearance of it. They have the front elevation, rear elevation here, and side elevations, and just the floor The plan here shows you the building, this part of the building already has residential use, and that was under a certificate of lawfulness. The black barn here has already been converted to residential, as has the one here, and the commercial business here is currently in the process of being converted. The building here is still in commercial use. And this is just some photographs to kind of give you an idea of context, so the cladding that will be applied to the existing building will be similar to the black barn, and this is just really so that you can see the roof lights in existing buildings, which are similar to what's proposed tonight. Come to the principle of development. This site's in the countryside, there's a detached building with hard standing and a parking area, that's considered to constitute developed, previously developed land. Planning permission was previously sought for change of use of the building to provide 10 additional dwellings, but this was considered unacceptable due to its cramped and contrived layout, which included gardens suffered from the dwellings by the briderway, parking spaces shown in various different locations, and due to the number and size of windows and openings. In the current proposal, all garden plots adjoining the houses they serve, parking is kept in one location, and the number and size of windows and openings has been reduced to maintain the rural appearance of the building. The previous proposal was also refused due to the isolated location, and it was considered an unsustainable form of development. It's noted one residential dwelling is already in the building, and several buildings in the immediate area have already been granted planning permission to convert from agricultural and commercial uses to residential dwellings. It's also noted the applicant has advised existing lawful business uses on the site have failed. The MPPF states that new isolated dwellings can be acceptable where development with reuse, redundant or disused buildings, and lead to enhancement to the immediate setting. The proposal includes measures such as cladding the buildings and landscaping, which are considered to lead to enhancement of the immediate setting. The buildings located to the rear of the site, any views from the conservation area are therefore limited, and the proposal is not considered to have an unacceptable impact on the setting of the conservation area. Parking provided is in accordance with the council's parking standards, access to the site is also considered acceptable. Approval is therefore recommended, subject to conditions. If you turn to the update sheet, there is a change to the drawing conditions. And there was just the, the comments came through from Surrey Wildlife Trust, but they're, they're happy with the proposal. We have had a neighbour, and also the parish council have actually asked if a condition could be put on for the equestrian business and horse bedding business to cease if permission is granted, but as they're already in existing buildings, the use would cease from that particular location, in any case, if this development's granted. That's, that's the end.
Right, thank you, Jenny. Right, open it up to the members. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, chair. As the ward member for this area, I know the area quite well, and as has been said, it's gone down from 10 to 7 dwellings. But I've got to say, for the location, I still think this is overdevelopment for this rural area. Last time, it was refused on two main grounds, and that was, it was isolated and unsustainable. Well, the premises are still isolated, and it's still unsustainable. I can't see what has changed. From that location, if there's children, they'd have to go up onto the Lockswood Road, and then walk approximately 1,000 yards to the top of the Lockswood Road near today, 281, to get the bus to school. And that gives me great, grave concern. The infrastructure's very poor, public transport virtually non-existent, so everything will be reliant on vehicles. And we always get it in these reports about the sewage and surface water, and it's almost now the obligatory, it will be dealt with by SUDs. And I find it very frustrating when applications come where we really don't know exactly how things are going to operate. It mentions about possible employment, I really can't see where that employment's going to come from, although there's a little bit of industry there, I think there's a Vets and a couple of other places. I think if there's one job there, we'd be very, very fortunate. I just don't see how things have changed, there's too many houses, it's still isolated, and the location's still very unsustainable. I mean, if you look at the Ridded shop, which is the closest place to it, which is fairly close, that's now closing after lunch. You know, the ladies decided just to open a few hours during the morning, and then close the shop. So I'll listen to what my colleagues say, but at the moment, I'm a little bit concerned about this application. Thank you.
Can we have the photograph of the building that we're talking about converting on the Right, thank you. Well, I listened very carefully to what councillor Dinas said. Are we going to be converting chicken sheds at some stage into dwellings? I think that's pretty awful. Anyway, it's an existing building, and we're talking about cladding it, I know, it doesn't look very, very good to me, so combined with the comment from councillor Dinas, I'm not very much in favour of this at all either. Anybody else? Sorry, councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, chairman. I just have to say that I ended up in exactly the same place as councillor Dinas when I read this report, that, you know, the strength of the previous rejection focusing on the isolated nature of this... I asked the question, what's changed, and hearing from the local member that nothing's changed, I struggle to see how we can actually arrive at a different conclusion. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, chairman. I've been looking through this report, and having read it before, to look for things that commend it. There are houses, and there was conversion done on the site, which are quite attractive, but I think part of it's the density. If I look at the outline of the building and the proposed elevation, I'm not sure it's good planning grounds, but it certainly doesn't look like a series of houses, it doesn't have any imagination. And perhaps one of my concerns there is that they should actually halve the number of dwellings, and actually produce something that aesthetically is a little bit more pleasing, and perhaps more accommodating for the people who are going to buy and live in here. Rabbit hutches comes a little bit to mind here. I'm not, I'm not impressed, but I shall listen to what anybody else has to say.
Thank you, chairman. I was heavily involved in the installation of the main sewer in Allfold, and at that point, which was, I think, 1969, it was running at a fairly heavy capacity, so I listened to what my fellow colleagues said about the Thames Water there, and I do know that Allfold has a particular problem with the capacity. I don't know whether that has been investigated, but they do have, it would worry me, I'm afraid. And the installation of the sewer is only a spun asbestos pipe, and it is very old, so I think that should be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I'll pick up on the, on the drainage point. Firstly, there's, there's two matters picked up. Firstly, the foul drainage, and we've obviously consulted the utility provider, and they, they haven't made an objection to the scheme on the basis of the number of dwellings and the location, so we have to be guided by them. You'll be aware that other sites in the area, they recommend a pre-commencement, Graham Pian style condition, which prevents any development taking place until a detailed connection and improvement has been carried out, but in this case, they haven't asked for it. In terms of the surface water and the SUDs management, the site's obviously got a building on it already, and it's covered in hard standing. It's below the threshold where we seek a sort of a detailed SUDs design, but obviously it's covered already with hard surfacing, so there's not going to be, or it's not going to have a detrimental impact on those grounds. But just on those, those two points, they are technical matters, which we have looked at, and we feel they can be addressed, or they, they are addressed through the consultation responses received, so I just wanted to pick up on that. I didn't, a few other comments, but I'm happy to let members further discuss. Okay, thank you, chairman. There was a few other points about the overdevelopment, just wanted to pick up on the points, obviously we've, we've gone from a scheme that was refused, to a scheme that's recommended for approval. Officers did consider the previous scheme with 10, 10 units to be an over subdivision of the site, and imbalance that, in combination with its location, was felt as together was reasonable enough to recommend refusal. So we've taken account of the reduction in units. It is still an isolated location, and that's acknowledged within the report, but it is, there's existing buildings surrounding there that have been converted to residential use. It's already used as a commercial premises, so you've got people coming and going and visiting that site, which is a comparable type of movement to a residential use, which we need to take account of. It's not just a greenfield that's not used, so it might be slightly different types of uses, but with a equine type of use, you have visitor in the morning and afternoon, and any other time where they, they might come along, so it is similar. So we've got to weigh that into balance, so that, that is the reason why we've come to a positive recommendation on this, but that is a matter for, for members to consider before them, and if they're not satisfied that this is, or if it is overdevelopment from their point of view, that's a matter for them to consider, and we'll assist you on those points if that, if that helps. Thank you, chairman.
Members, any more? Councillor, Mrs. Stennett.
Being one of the schoolchildren who used to walk to school in Allfold, the school, of course, is gone, one of the pubs has gone, one of the shops has gone. Allfold is contracting, rather than expanding in facilities for the people that live there. I noticed in the paperwork that the southern waters say that they will require a formal application for connection to a public sewer. And I can't see that with the 55 houses that we've already agreed, they're only about half a mile, quarter of a mile away from this particular site, that unless they get this sewage water sorted before they build the 55 houses, I can't see that these 10 are going to make a great deal of difference, or 8. But on the other hand, nothing comes without, nothing comes without the population expecting it. So I could only suggest that this application was deferred, and perhaps brought back in with a lesser amount of properties, because 8 is still quite high. And perhaps, once they've built the other 55, and done some extra work on the roads, maybe some of the other facilities, I know there's a shop at the garage, but either way, the people that live on this site, even if they have or don't have children, would have a long way to walk to buy a loaf or a pint of bread, a loaf of bread or a pint of milk. So at the moment, I do agree with my colleagues that I would feel that it's still quite isolated. Well, I'm, I'm sorry to disagree with the officers, because it's a very, very good report, but I really feel that Allfold needs a bit more, a bit more heart before we start putting in too many more houses. Thank you.
So is that a proposal, that we defer this for... I don't know, can we come to do that?
It's, it's a proposal that the applicant might prefer to defer, and perhaps look at the amount of houses again, because I do think that 8 is probably a bit too many for where it is, on the top of the hill there, before you go down towards the old Crown Pub. I know it has, already has residential in that, and also businesses in that, on that site, but it's, first of all, it's, as my colleague here said, if the people that move in do have children, there is nothing for them in that area. There is no, there is a playground, but that's a good half a mile up by the crossroads, which, it's not impossible to walk it, but it's, these roads are faster and faster these days. The village itself needs a bit more in the way of shops and pubs and life, and maybe that will come with the 55 houses that we've already given permission for, but at the moment, I feel it's a, it's a step too far. So I am prepared to say, yes, let's defer it, and ask the applicant to think again.
Peter, are you wanting to come in?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I note the points, so thank you councillor Stennett, Mrs. Stennett, for those. I think what we need, we've got an application before us for seven units to convert the building. We need to take a view, we have a duty to take a view and make a decision on that application. If you were to invite a deferral of the application, that might be for further information, but I think what you, if I take away, correct me if you're wrong, you're suggesting it's, at the moment, it's either not appropriate, and other concerns that we've heard that it's, it's too many units being provided. So I think you need to look at that and make a decision on this current application of what's before you. If it is decided that you don't feel you're comfortable with what's before you, and it was recommended for refusal, we can take away those comments and talk to the applicant about those and addressing those, but for the, for the committee tonight, I'd recommend through the chairman to look if we can make a decision, unless there's a real... a decision, unless there's a reason to defer it, to seek further information. Thank you, chairman.
Okay. I'm advised that we have to decide this application as it stands, that we don't really have the power to send it away to be reconsidered. But as Peter said, if the decision of the members is to refuse it, then that would give the applicant that opportunity anyway.
Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Henry.
Thank you, chair. This is not a meritorious building, is it? And the work that was proposed to convert the stabling into housing is not a good design, I don't think. That there is a real need for smaller housing, particularly in the rural communities. I do understand that only too well. But I don't think this is a bar that we want to be stepping up to, and I cannot agree with this application. Thank you.
Zero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Would any member like to put forward reasons for refusal, please? Yes, councillor Deanis.
I think the two main ones which we discussed was the isolated location and the sustainability, which I think mirrors really the two views that were given for the last application. And I don't think... I've seen anything which has changed those as grounds. I don't know whether we can put about the design and the fact it is, it seems to be cramping in as many individual residencies into that place, but that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Officer Comment, are you happy with that?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, and thank you councillor Deanis. At the bottom of page 102 of your agenda, there's the two reasons for refusal previously used. The first one talks about undesirable over subdivision of the site resulting in a cramped form of residential development and contrived layout detrimental to future occupiers. We could probably add a further point in there regarding specifically to the design of the building, which I think reference was due, if members agree to that, and it would probably be by reason of the design of the proposed conversion would result in harm to the visual amenities of the locality, or something along those lines. I think that's taking your words from what you've said, and we can combine that into that first reason for refusal if that would be supported. Thank you, chairman.
Could we also add, I think most people have spoken, as mentioned, overdevelopment? Or are you going to incorporate that in the comments on design?
Thank you, chairman. We can add the word overdevelopment into that reason for refusal, so we could write the proposed development would comprise an overdevelopment of the site and an undesirable over subdivision. That makes sense. Thank you, chairman.
Although we hadn't mentioned it, obviously, the ground two, which was the location remoteness, et cetera, et cetera, as you had mentioned that, Peter, I just wanted to make sure that was also going to go in.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, that's the second reason on the bottom page 102 that you've recommended. Thank you, chairman.
Are we agreed that we... The application be refused on those grounds? Agreed? Thank you. Item B3, WA 2016 0846. Okay, item B3, WA 2016 0846, Gaston House, Guildford Road, Cranley, GU68QZ. Jenny, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Right. The proposal is for a two-storey detached L-shaped building to provide two offices on the ground floor and two offices on the first floor. Amenity space and parking is provided for both the flats and offices. Access to the site will be via the existing access road to the side of the existing house. First plan is showing the red line site. Just for clarification, the red line site doesn't just include the site where the house is located, but also part of the yard to the back. We've got some photographs of the site. This is the front view. And the view across the common land. And just some photographs showing the internal situation, which is that there's no amenity space for the existing house, it's just nearly all hard surfaced. And just to show you the access road, which will... The access will be through here instead of the one that's currently used. This shows the site in the building. And this is a larger plan, just to show the layout. The L-shaped part at the back provides an open carport for three cars. And just the first floor layout. This shows the front elevation of the house and the rear. The two side elevations. This shows the relationship of the proposed building with the existing garage. The red dotted line is the existing house. And the final drawing shows the previous proposal, which was nearly across the whole width of the site. And this is just showing you the rural settlement boundary. The site is close to the edge of the rural settlement. Then we come to the determining issues. The sites within the Green Belt, where there's a general presumption against inappropriate development. However, the site is also within the rural settlement area of Rowley and identified in policy RD1 as one of the villages within the Green Belt that would be able to accommodate limited development. Our planning application was previously proposed in 2015 for four flats and subsequently withdrawn following a recommendation for refusal. The previous proposal was considered unacceptable due to the width of the building, which filled nearly the whole frontage of the site, the design of the building, and the provision of amenity space at the front, which would be bounded by a large wall. The current proposal is materially different, as the width has been reduced, the design has been changed to reflect development in the area, and the amenity space is now provided to the side and rear of the proposed building, and a low-level 1.2 metre-high posthumary fence is proposed at the front of the site. The proposal involves the loss of the existing house, but two new flats are proposed. The proposal also provides new offices for the commercial operation, which is located at the rear of the existing house, but does not involve the loss of the commercial use of the site. While the MPPF seeks to protect the Green Belt from inappropriate development, it's not the case that no development of any kind can ever take place. Indeed, paragraph 89 of the MPPF sets out a number of exceptions with regard to the construction of new buildings, including if development consists of limited infilling or the partial or complete development of previously developed sites, provided there would not be a greater impact on the openness of the Green Belt. It's therefore necessary to consider planning applications on Green Belt land based on site-specific issues. Approval of development on one site does not mean another site can also gain consent if the site circumstances are different. In this particular case, the sites within the rural settlement, which policy RD1 identified as an area where limited development can take place, the site is surrounded by the garage, holly yard, and residential development, and does not make a positive contribution to the character and visual amenities of the area. The proposed development is considered to consist of limited infilling and redevelopment of previously developed land, which can be considered appropriate development in the Green Belt. The proposal has been designed to be in keeping with the surrounding area in terms of design and location. Just for information, policy RD2 does not apply in this case, as this specifically provides guidance for development outside of settlements, and as has already been stated, the application site is within a settlement. The existing site is largely hard surfaced, and the opportunity to site a new building further away from others in the vicinity with new landscape provides an opportunity to improve the appearance of the site. The new building is designed to be in keeping with the area and will appear more spacious than the current situation, where the existing building is sited close to the neighbouring garage. Parking for two flats is provided and open carport, and a parking space is provided to the side of the building as well. Parking for the office staff and visitors will be retained in the existing yard behind the house. It's considered that acceptable parking has been provided. Approval is therefore recommended, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Jenny. Members?
Thank you, chairman. Although this application actually is within the civil parish of Wanash, it is right on the edge of that parish and probably has more impact on the Cranley area than it does within Wanash Parish itself. So I'd be interested to hear what comments come from those more associated with Cranley. But from my perspective, there is a need for small developments of houses and housing. Clearly, although this is within the Green Belt, it is what I would call a quasi-Brownfield site. And clearly, also, it's a much significant improvement on what was proposed previously with four houses, four dwellings being squashed onto this site. And frankly, in appearance, it looks quite good. I acknowledge the fact that, you know, it does incorporate an office space which has moved, but I'm not clear that that in itself makes it unacceptable in planning terms. Also, and undoubtedly, it's a slightly larger... Somewhat larger impact on the site than the existing house, but nonetheless, the design of the proposed seems to me to be entirely in keeping with the vernacular. But I'm still, you know, prepared to listen to what others have to say, who maybe have more closely affected than we are in Wanash with this.
Thank you, chairman. I always find it extremely uncomfortable and awkward when members are asked to determine an application that's by a fellow councillor. It... We're only human at the end of the day, and sometimes we don't like to disappoint, but I'm afraid on this occasion, I'm going to treat this application as I would any other and forget who the applicant actually is. I was pleased to hear what Mike Band had to say and welcoming the viewpoint from Cranley, because this is more an area that is seen to be in... A property that is more to be seen in the Cranley area rather than the Wanash area, which is on the very edge of the settlement of Rowley. I think we have to look at this application on its own merit. The current property, as I said, is on the edge of the settlement, and it is in the Green Belt. It's also clear that currently what we're looking at on that site is a three-bedroom detached domestic resident. It's not a commercial, it's not a business, it's a family home. And it has got planning constraints. You've got RD1 of the Green Belt, you've got AGLV, you've got potential contamination, and you've got the common land, which also adds to the constraints. The previous application, 004, on this site, recommended refusal, and the application was subsequently withdrawn. We saw something earlier with a similar situation earlier this evening. And the current scheme is for mixed use. And if you look at page 139, it shows a very large, nice house, supported by a statement on page 152. So where we have this mixed use, what it actually looks like is a very large house, and it's also supported in a statement that suggests it's a very large house by its sheer design and appearance. The design and the access statement also states that there's an office hub subject to a separate planning submission. I'm sorry, but I would like... Page 111 of the document, you will see that it describes the loss of lawful uses and states that the proposal will not result in the loss of a commercial use. It's not a commercial, it's a family detached home, it's not a business. Comparatives on page 148 demonstrates that there's no commercial, the application came before us under 004. To this application, this application alone. There's no loss of importance, there's no loss of commercial, and there's no business on the site. The report... Where I think this can be a little misleading, and I mean that with the greatest of respect, and the report shows the current proposed scheme under the previous withdrawn application, and only actually shows the dotted line of the house that was there before. I just think we should be looking at what is there now, not what's proposed, because what's proposed has been withdrawn, is entirely different. Another thing that bothers me enormously is the parking provision. It's below the policy required, showing four spaces only. This is a development that's contrary to policy. It's in the Green Belt and it has got constraints. RD1 is clear that it's inappropriate development in the Green Belt by definition is harmful and should not be approved unless there's very special circumstances. In my opinion, there are no very special circumstances here, and they certainly haven't been demonstrated. If we go back to 004 and we go back to 08 and we go to the current one, we say on the one hand that the plan that has been shown in the location is clearly segregated by red and blue. And just until tonight, we've not seen that segregation. On our papers, it's segregated in black and white, so it almost is... Shows us that looking at a whole site, not the site that we're talking about. In 004, there was eight parking spaces, in this application there's four. In 004, there's no commercial, in this one it's mixed use. It talks about infilling as unacceptable in 004, but infilling in this application is acceptable. It shows clearly the current property in 004, but it shows the withdrawn application in this. 004 recommends refusal, this application recommends granting approval. In my opinion, and I'd be very interested to see what other members... To listen to what other members have to say, there are no... You have not demonstrated very special circumstances here. It's contrary to policy, on balance, it's a matter of judgment, and in my opinion, the harm and adverse impact to this development far outweighs any benefits. And I think that goes wider across the spectrum, because whether it looks a bit industrial, heavy, commercial there, it's still in the Green Belt. Are we going to set a precedence there then to say we're going to start in creation on the Green Belt, say, for example, on Mansfield Industrial Estate? So I think we've got to be very, very clear here that the application that before us is clearly different to what's on site. I personally would like to see this refused. I'll be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. If they're not in favour of refusing it, then I would urge members to go on a site visit and come to their own conclusions, based on the fact that we have policies to protect us, and we're not allowing them to protect us because we're not looking at the application as it currently is. Thank you, chairman.
Sorry, councillor Vorhasevsky. You are proposing that we conduct a site visit? Or defer this for a site visit?
Unless members have anything they would like to contribute, because I would like to hear what members have to say.
Nobody else had anything to say. I will go to the officers first, and then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, councillor Vorhasevsky. There's just a couple of points that you've asked us to pick up on and that we'd like to come back on and respond to. I think firstly, the Green Belt issue is a very important issue that we need to look at. at. As set out in the presentation, the site is located within the rural settlement boundary where certain allowances for development can take place. It is on the edge, so we have to consider that that may be more sensitive than a site that was right within the rural settlement boundary. But paragraph 89 of the MPPF is clear that you can have limited infilling in the villages. Officers consider this to be limited infilling within the settlement boundary and therefore very special circumstances don't have to be demonstrated in such cases if we consider that is an appropriate development. So that's the position of officers, taking account of the scale of it. We think it is appropriate to the scale. Along that road, we've got a number of large detached type properties that, which are sat in spacious type plots. The scheme before us overcomes the previous concerns where it was filling the entire width with setting it into the boundary and it does appear as a detached residential dwelling. And I think that is an intention, so it fits in with the character of the area. The second point, we've obviously got a local plan policy as well as RD1 and that talks about what could be comprised, or appropriate development could comprise infilling of small gaps in continuous built-up area boundaries, but also we need to take account of whether it affects the urban to rural transition, which is relevant in this case where we're on the edge of a boundary. Again, we feel it doesn't harm that because of the separation distance to boundary and the scale and the reductions. So that effectively picks up on the green belt, it's an officer's view, it is a judgment, but we don't believe that just because the building's slightly larger, it does sit within the plot, given the character of the area and scale of buildings around, it doesn't harm the openness. But that is a judgment for members. In terms of parking provision, four parking spaces are referred to. There's four parking spaces provided for the residential uses, so that's the two flats. And there's seven spaces proposed in the yard to the rear which is in the red line boundary of the site, so that's for the office use, so that it does meet the council's parking guidelines. And we've got a condition to secure the provision of the parking. In terms of the point regarding the family home, yes, it is an existing residential property, but as you can see from the pictures, it's surrounded in hard standing, there's not a particularly open area or private garden area for children or just generally sitting out on. The proposed building, replacement building is an enhancement on that. So yes, there is a loss of a detached residential dwelling, but we don't think it's an attractive form. The proposal proposes two smaller units which are a type of units that's needed and some amenity space for those and the internal area within those are acceptable also. So I think they're all the points I wanted to pick up and if there's any other questions, I'm happy to take them. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, I didn't have any concerns about this and we've looked at the applications before and overall, I felt that previous applications actually were reasonable because of the type of area it's in. Yes, it's green belt, but it's a strange mix, isn't it? Strange mix of buildings, the garage there, we had tremendous problems, I know, many years ago with the property to the, whatever it is, to the left of the garage which had, we had problems of car sales going on within a curtilage of an existing dwelling which was stopped. And of course, the yard that is there and a whole range of other things. So overall, I'm supportive of this application except the recommendations of the officers and indeed the explanations that we've had from Peter this evening. But if other members felt there was a need for a site visit prior to making a final decision, I would be happy to go along with that.
Councillor Voracewski, you wanted to come back, yes?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. And thank you to Peter for your response. I do have a copy of the conclusion and the planning judgment from the application 004, which talks very much about what you've just said there. It's well worth members having a look at and reading it. Can I just say there that that picture does not do the site and the area justice, because what it makes it look like is a very commercial built-up brownfield area, which in fact it isn't. Dead opposite there, you have one of the most beautiful areas that I'm privileged to be award member for Cranley, which is Cranley North and it's open country space. It's staggeringly beautiful. If you look to the right over here, you have some spectacular houses in some spectacular areas. If you go past the garage, you go up the Guildford Road where you have a whole number of dwellings that are unique, outstanding, on a highway that is just beautiful. So I think that one area there doesn't reflect the overall area of the site and I would urge members and I would like to propose at this stage that we do have a site visit so you can have informed choices about what you're making a decision on. Also, I think when we talk about, on our plans, it shows parking for four, the other seven, it becomes a little, I'm sorry, I must have missed something because I didn't see them in that curtilage of the location. So, I'm sorry, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I totally agree with councillor Voracewski's suggestion that a site visit is useful, to the point that I actually got in my car and went down and had a look at it myself, so I've got the benefit of having had a good look at the site today. Whilst it's a little unfortunate that the last minute there were a flurry of objections for Cranley residents which didn't arrive in time to be collated and summarised and included in our discussion, after having a look at the site and looking at those objections, on balance, I must admit, I'm inclined to support the officer's recommendation. The site's got commercial premises behind and to one side, so we're looking at the replacement of a tired existing dwelling and unkempt grounds with what looks to be quite a well-designed building in my opinion. So I don't see that it's likely to significantly impair the visual amenity of the general area. And, you know, as you approach the site from Shamley Green or Run Common Road, the thing that catches the eye is the Gaston Garage next to it and that was the first thing that caught my eye when I was coming down today and I don't actually see that significantly changing. I don't see this new design standing out so much that it's going to be an impairment on the landscape. So overall, my inclination is to support the application. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, if we can go back to councillor Voracewski's proposal that this application be deferred for a site visit, do we have a seconder? No, we don't, sorry. Any other members wish to comment? Oh, we've got two over there. Councillor Deenis.
Thank you, Chair. I know the site quite well because I know the area, so for me, a site visit wouldn't actually give me any benefit at all. I totally understand my colleague's views and her concerns, but I do feel Mr Cleveland has answered the points actually quite well. But there's a couple of very minor questions I would like to ask. And page 143, when it talks about the area that you need to turn the vehicle, I just want to confirm that's been addressed. Page 144, there's a comment about the protruding wing and how it will overlook into people, you know, the next door neighbour's garden. I just want to be assured that the officers have considered that. And finally, sorry, it's three things in total. The three reasons for refusal last time was, it appears to me, was width, design and amenity space. From what's been said, I believe the three have been dealt with, but I just want confirmation I haven't misheard that and all three have been dealt with. I know you've spoken at different times, but I just want to be assured that all three have been dealt with, otherwise we are back to the same grounds as before. So if I could have that clarification, thank you.
Officers, would you like to clarify that before and then councillor Gray wishes?
Yeah, on the refuse collection, what the, you'll see that the applicant has put the bin storage on this side and then he has a gate that goes through to Stenant's Yard, so what he's planning is for the, when it comes to collection days, that goes through to the collection area that's already in the yard and so the bin men will come and collect everything all at once. So they don't need to actually have the refuse vehicle go into this site at all because they'll be going into the yard to do it.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'll pick up on the other two points. So the first one was the amenity on the neighbouring property. On page 157 of the agenda, we talk about that and it is approximately a distance of 29 metres between the proposed new building and facing elevation to Gaston Gate Cottage. Is a separation distance maintained and that is well over and above what we recommend as 21 metres of a separation distance window to window in our guidance, so we feel that's acceptable and the overall separation distance continues further as the building's set in as well. So I think that is not going to result in any significant harm to the neighbouring residential property. The second point is with regards to reasons for refusal, we're satisfied that the scheme, given the reduction in scale, given the provision of the amenity space which you can see on the bottom of the plan, behind where you can see the carport style, that is a shared amenity space for the flats and also for the, and there's an area for the offices as well and we feel that gives a suitable space for future occupants. And overall, the reduction overcomes the harm to the transition and the green belt. So hopefully that is useful. Thank you, Chairman.
I think it's important to comment on the applicant in this case. It is a councillor, I don't know councillor Stenant to that degree, but I have looked carefully at this because there is an involvement. I've heard nothing tonight which should really stop me from basically agreeing with the officer's recommendation in respect of this application, that there was one question that came up and that is whether there was any concern over the fact that the offices which could subsequently be converted into something have their parking spaces in a separate area and whether the officers had any concerns on that.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we've got a condition to control and prevent the conversion of the offices without the need for planning permission, so if that was to come forward, we can, we have control of that and the parking provision at that stage and we'd be able to consider that then. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, I will be brief. I think that just addresses the point I was going to raise with regards to the office hub subject to a separate planning submission. Was that answered?
Thank you, Chairman. We haven't got a current application for a separate office hub that we're considering at this stage and it doesn't form part of the planning history. I note that you've referred to it from the DAS, but we haven't been in receipt of the application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. It's just that it's in the report and it makes it look as though there's another subsequent application coming along. And just to address one of the points some members are clear, this has not been a knee-jerk reaction from residents in Cranley. Wanash is the parish that this application would have gone to for it to be looked at there, it wouldn't have come to Cranley Parish Council, so local residents wouldn't have known about this application unless they were thralling through the website looking for it. It only became apparent as it was reported at one of our meetings as to why it didn't come to Cranley Parish Council, that's why you've had a late flurry. Thank you, Chairman.
To 12 and informatives 1 to 6 as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against?
One.
Thank you, members, the recommendation to grant is agreed. Right, now we move on to... Are we going to item A1 now, yes? Right, we now move on to item 6.2, item A1. WA Abilick 2016, Abilick 0599, Northcote Farm, Northcote Lane, Shamley Green, GU50RB. Zaira, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chair. Members will note that this application was deferred at the June committee meeting to allow a site visit to take place. This has now occurred. Again, the application site is located on the south west paddock of Northcote Farm, Northcote Lane and it's a narrow country lane with high bank semi-tire hedging. At the site visit, committee members raised concern regarding the location of the gate into the field. The applicant has provided clarification and advised that the proposed access gate would be situated within the field at the top of the entrance, you'll see here, to allow four vehicles to come off the lane and not block traffic on Northcote Lane. The applicant has also proposed to install mixed hedging to reduce any visual impacts proposed by the access. So this image shows the location of the proposed access and within the field and this image shows the two plantings that would be removed, the silver birch and the hazel coppice trees to accommodate the proposed access. Unfortunately, plans could not be provided by the applicant in time for the committee meeting, but this has been indicated as the two plantings that would be removed to accommodate the development. This is looking west and again, the arrows indicate the proposed trees to be removed along with the access into the farm here. This photo depicts the existing access on the corner of Northcote Lane and the applicant has advised that they propose to relocate the entrance due to the existing access being on a blind corner and having experienced near misses when they've accessed the site pulling out with their trailers. The applicants don't own the existing road access and they cannot install secure electric gate to assist with their farm securities and they have expressed that they did have a burglary that happened on the farm and this gate was accessed. Additionally, the applicants have proposed the new access as the main entrance to the property, so this would reduce further traffic going further up Northcote Lane. This again is looking at Northcote Lane, looking east and the red arrow indicates the proposed access. The applicant has advised that the drive would gradually incline into the field and this would take approximately 25 cubic metres of earth to be displaced. Unfortunately, they weren't able to provide plans indicating this in time for the committee meeting. This bank would be planted with native hedging to replace any plants removed. This bank would be planted with native hedging to replace any plants removed as a result of the proposed access. The committee's site visit was carried on Monday 11th of July and resulted in additional information being sought from the applicants by the officers. The applicants provided additional details to address the queries raised by the members. However, detailed plans could not be provided within the timeframe. The applicant requested that although there were no plans provided, the written additional details provided by the applicant be used to help determine the application at this committee meeting. Having regard to the queries raised by the committee members and the additional information provided, two additional conditions are recommended by the officer to include with the five conditions already recommended. The first condition, which would form condition six, is that prior to commencement of any works on site, a landscape plan shall be provided indicating the location of the silver birch and hazel coppice trees to be removed and trees/hedging to be retained. Details of the tree protection measures for the trees to be retained shall be included with the landscape plan. The tree protection measures hereby approved shall remain in place throughout the duration of the construction works. The local planning authority shall be informed of the proposed date of commencement at least one working week in advance to allow for inspection of protection measures. Condition two, the second condition which would form condition seven, is that no development shall take place until details have been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority, showing the location of the proposed access gate and fencing and the proposed finished ground levels of the access track to the centre of Northcote Lane to the access gate. The development shall be carried out in strict accordance with the approved details. Therefore, the revised recommendation reads that subject to conditions 1 to 7, informatives 1 to 5, permission be granted.
This is a public speaking item, and I believe that the process has been explained to you all. May I invite the opponents, Mr Howard and Mrs Squire, to speak, please? Good evening, Mr Howard and Mrs Squire, is with you? Yes? Okay, Mr Howard, you have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
So, I'm speaking on behalf of the eight generals. As the proposal is not compliant with policy RD10, the access is not reasonably necessary for the use of the site. Have the applicants already had two fully consulted...
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for the public speakers for their contribution. And thank you, officers, also for organising a site visit, which I think was particularly helpful for those of us who managed to get there, to see actually what was going on in situ. I think, I can see it is difficult for people in the neighbourhood to understand what is happening here, but I think it would be difficult to actually refuse this applicant, provided the additional conditions we've heard are properly incorporated. I mean, to my mind, four particular things came out of the site visit when we saw it. Firstly, I mean, the drawing needed to be updated so we could see exactly which trees were going to be removed and where the replanting was going to take place. Secondly, we needed to see on the drawing, and I think the drawing needed to be updated to see exactly where the top of the bank was going to end up after the splaying back from opening up the sightlines which are clearly not being done at the current time. The third thing is that the gate needs to be set sufficiently far back, the new track in the field, to allow an agricultural vehicle and trailer to be able to access the track without blocking the road before it approaches the gate. And fourthly, I think the levels need to be accurately laid out on the plan. Now, if those four are incorporated in their entirety as conditions or... And that's the intention of the conditions, the revised conditions the officers are proposing, because I haven't seen a piece of paper with them all written on, then I would somewhat perhaps reluctantly accept that this is an application which we should approve.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I was the one who proposed the site visit, and a lot of people can attend it, and I was glad I did call it because it confirmed a lot of thoughts that I had. First of all, we got lost trying to find the site, partly our fault, I think, but that was very helpful, actually, because we ended up at Northcote Farm House entrance and a very grand drive up into the old farmhouse, et cetera, parked there and walked up and down the lane there, and then looked and used the second entrance further down towards this entrance, which showed the access to all of the other older farm buildings and some work going on within one of the barns there. I'm not quite sure what it was, but we were walking around there, so we actually saw all that. We finally got our act together and came back to the proper entrance and walked in there, and the officer was still there, obviously, and gave us a layout, and we walked the site. My understanding of the original drawings that we had for where the new drive was going to be placed were actually further to the west, I thought, or to the left as we're looking at it there, if that's the correct way, and therefore immediately opposite the drive to, is it, I've forgotten the name of the other property, Northcote Cottage, is it? But whatever, the opposite driveway that is shown on that map, it's now seen to have moved back, which presumably creates more problems with regard to access in and out of that drive. And indeed, I would have thought the splay that we need and we're marking there, the splay coming back, the splay bearing in mind the traffic is travelling on the left-hand side going up the hill and to the right there, that the visibility problems and sightlines looking back wouldn't work very well. It's all very narrow there, and in conclusion, I think the existing entrance is the safest place it could be. The vehicles that are coming out, the majority of them, I would assume, are going down towards the Cranley Road, and therefore, the immediate sightlines and the approach to the road to get off of the track looks in the right direction and gives all the sightlines that they would wish. There is a bend, obviously, shown there to the left as you come out, which would automatically, I would assume, mean that drivers would have time to slow down, and if there are vehicles in front of them, then they would clear that. And it appears from the drawing there that the sightlines back towards the proposed site is a much clearer setting. To me, it wasn't. So, overall, I cannot see any justification or any safety situation which would mean that I would wish to support the approval of this new entrance. I think the existing entrance is right. There is a gate on it. They could obviously move the gate further back if they were concerned about getting on there, and it gets vehicles out, and it doesn't destroy the lane, which I think the new access is bound to do. There are obviously lots of accesses on there, but overall, I don't think it's necessary or indeed more safe. I think it's less safe than what is there at the moment, and therefore, I'm not going to support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor, Mr Stennett.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got to say that I'm in agreeance with the officers, and also owning big vehicles and running heavy trucks like we do as a company, that access is going to make that safer, because going up to the second entrance onto that farm with these very large tractors and vehicles today creates more danger for a longer period of time. And I actually walked my dog up at Black Heath, all enough, and the existing entrance, which I know the farmer doesn't own, there is often cars parked in there, and if you get a large vehicle stopped there, that does cause problems. I just would like to clarify that the gate is going to be, my colleague here mentioned it, is going to be minimum 60 foot back, so that any large tractor, trailer or implement drives straight in and is off the lane in one swoop. So, I compliment the officers on a good report, and I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I found the site visit extremely useful, not only the site itself, but to be able to wander up and down the lane and see the other accesses and entrances to the properties along there. So, it was enormously useful. The proposed new access is better suited to enable the workings of farm traffic, and in this day and age, farm traffic is quite, the vehicles that they use are quite large and bulky. And I believe this proposed access will ensure that there is safety both on and off the site. One can understand the dilemma of the applicant, the double S bend that you have there, maintenance issues, road users actually parking on the verge to his access to the entrance, moveability, weather conditions and suchlike. This new access, I believe, will provide for a fit-for-purpose access for the farmworkers. The reinstatement of the bank and the hedging of the former access would provide, I believe, a buffer to the proposed access. Policy RD10 states what is permitted, and I believe this new access road amply complies with that requirement. I think along with the added conditions and the concerns that we had at the site visit, this new access will work. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. I also benefited from the site visit and also was one of those who got lost. So, I benefited from the extended site visit. I had some queries about this, the access and the rationale behind it, but I think that now that I've read the report and been there, I'm much more inclined to support the applicant. I do have concerns about runoff on water coming down that field and potentially its impact on the road, and I don't know whether officers would talk about that and come back to me, but also about the use of this road and to make sure that the use of this road and access was restricted and not able to be extended beyond that which the other two accesses are used for. I think that concludes my comments.
Councillor, Mrs Stennett.
Three things. I didn't actually vote for the site visit, because I thought I knew the road pretty well, because when you drive in from the Shamley Green Road, the access is straight ahead of you, and you have to go round the corner and on up to Northcote Farm itself. When I went into the field and looked back and looked down, I could see that the access, a new access where they're hoping to put it, would be a better bet, inasmuch as it would mean the tractors, the trailers, farm vehicles do not need to go right down the lane and round the corner and then into the old access, into the existing access. So, in that respect, it would be safer. But to reply to Mr Gray's comments about the lane, there are lots of horse boxes up and down that lane, and they are pretty big. There is, right on the top where the lane meets, which goes on up to Black Heath, there is an equestrian area, and I believe this committee some years ago gave them permission to put an access gate back over their land so that it took the length of a horse box. And driving up there to walk the dog, as we do pretty regularly, that now that it's all settled in, looks pretty good. And I can't see that, having given them permission to do that, that we should refuse permission to do this. that we should refuse permission to do this. I think it would be safer, too.
Peter, you'd like to come back.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There was a number of comments about conditions. I just wanted to clarify. And the conditions were a verbal update, so you haven't got them on your update sheet. But we're recommending a tree protection condition during construction to retain those trees around so they're not harmed by any excavation works. We would also recommend the condition regarding the site levels, a more detailed plan on that, which we can deal with and also can consult with the County Highway Authority and ensure that visibility displays are dealt with there as well. Two extra conditions, which I think have been, well, I think we can pick up on two points, is requiring the exact position of the entrance gate. And again, that would be in consultation with the County Highway Authority and ensure it's set back sufficiently to allow appropriate agricultural vehicle and trailer to enter the site free of the highway. And a fourth condition of a scheme to control surface water runoff to prevent that going on to the public highway. And I think that's a reasonable condition as well. I haven't got the specific wording, but if you'll be happy for officers to word those last two conditions, that would be recommended, hopefully. Thank you, Chairman. That would be correct. And if you're happy for us to word the final detail, we're happy to share them with you, Chairman, before we send them out. Thank you.
So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to nine and informatives one to five as set out on the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those against?
One.
No, I wasn't, no, I was voting for, sorry. Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. All right, so we now take... Going to play musical chairs. Thank you. Next item is item A two, reference WA oblique two thousand and sixteen, oblique zero six eight zero, Dolphin Cottage, Dumpsfold Road, Allfold, GU six eight JV. Linda, would you like to, Linda's not here, is she? No, it's not Linda, it's Tim, sorry, Tim. It's a trouble with reading from a script, isn't it? Tim, would you like to introduce this application?
Thanks, Chairman. Members, the site is located within a rural settlement of Allfold and comprises a detached single dwelling with parking at the rear here. The site surroundings comprise residential properties. This location plan is slightly outdated as there are new build residential properties here, but they are shown on the block plan. This is the proposed block plan. Proposal is for extensions and alterations to the existing dwelling to provide four one-bedroom flats, two flats on ground floor and two flats on first floor. The extensions and alterations consist of these two, what are called gable extensions here. Extend, this one extending up to the existing building line of the property and this one coming out new. Proposed parking is proposed, five parking spaces here with entrance to three of the flats here and one entrance here. It's the existing dwelling. It's a typical looking property. And existing floor plans, again with a typical layout. The proposed elevations, this is the front elevation here. This shows an existing new build properties to the southern side of the building. This shows one of the proposed gable extensions I mentioned earlier on. This is the north-west elevation proposed. So those two gable extensions are here, along with new first floor windows. And again, looking at the rear of the building, you can just see the gable extension here and the single entrance to one of the flats. And on the other side, this is very much staying as it is. The proposed floor plans, this is a ground floor plan here. An entrance here would be created. That would provide entrance to three of the flats, two at first floor and one one-bedroom flat here. The other one-bedroom flat at ground floor would be entrance off this elevation here and that would come in here. And the first four flats, again, one here and one here. The new windows would be created on this side and actually replacement windows throughout and provide outlook to the rooms. This is the existing building. You'll note here, this existing fence here, this is all to be removed. This is where the existing gable would be created here, along with new windows and the gable extension here. And then in between would be the entrance to the three flats. And here's looking from further down the road, there's existing drop curb here which provides parking. The parking area here would be reused. And also behind here would be re-landscaped to provide outdoor garden space. And the entrance to one of the ground floor flats would be here. Members, in terms of determining issues with this application, I'll draw attention to the matter of judgment on the right-hand side. The site is within the rural settlement boundary where in principle new residential development can be acceptable. In that respect, with extensions and alterations and parking proposed, the impact on the character of the countryside and visual amenity area is a matter of judgment. The impact on residential amenity as well. The proposal does create new additional first floor windows that would face neighbouring properties. Having conducted the assessment, officers have satisfied that there would not be material harm caused to naming residential amenity. This, of course, is a matter of judgment for members this evening. If I can turn members' attention now to the update sheet for this application. Members will note the, we have an updated plan, which I have shown in the presentation, which is existing elevations. And therefore, the existing elevations plan on page twenty seven in the agenda is superseded by the one in my presentation. We have an additional representation there summarised for you. And the recommendation, Chairman, is therefore to remain as set out in the agenda. That permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. This is a public speaking item and may I invite the opponent, Mr Handley, to speak. Good evening, Mr Handley. You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Initially, I'd like to say that my life and I are absolutely not against housing developments. In fact, we have fully supported under three full developments encompassing six new houses and a large garage within thirty metres of our property. These have had a somewhat negative impact on our lives, overlooking, et cetera, and we would readily accept these as part of the necessary challenge of time. The separation distance between our property and the windows of the plan is just twenty-one metres. However, our main garden sitting out area is two metres within that figure. Included in the letters that are sent to each member of the committee are photographs of that property and garden. And the shrubs and shed that obscure the position of two plan windows can be removed during the process. So all four windows will be standing looking at our property. The land here falls and Dolphin Cottage is higher than our property. The upper story windows have a clear view straight into our traditional living room, as they are square on to us. Also to our bedrooms and obviously our garden. There was a previous application in two thousand and fifteen, which was few from overlooking and other reasons. And that application actually had fewer and smaller windows overlooking our property. The current property, as you saw, has one point of window only looking over our property. And that is clearly designed to avoid overlooking that. The planning sitting rooms, both of the planning sitting rooms, have sufficient light from any windows. I'm not sure why they put side windows in making it a gym aspect. So side windows are also a problem. When people in the two kitchens on the first floor are standing at their seat, the natural view direction would be straight into our traditional living rooms. Our second concern is traffic generation and lack of parking space. With four flats and no informal parking, despite what the applicant states in the area.
Thank you, Chair. This is my area again, so it's been a busy night for me. And in some ways, I'm probably more passionate about this one than the last one. If we talk about the location, the, looking at the map, the new four premises were on the side to the old MOT place. And that was a very tired, contaminated area. So I think the new buildings there were sort of welcomed. And as Mr Handley said, and thank you for speaking, opposite and very close have been some other properties recently built in the last couple of years. I always read the parish council's views and how much detail they've gone into because I think that gives a good indication of how strong their views are. And Allfold Parish Council have obviously taken considerable time considering this. And I've got to say, I absolutely agree with what they say. The house, Dolphin House, does need to be removed, replaced or whatever. But we are trying to squeeze a pint in a half pint glass here again tonight. I think it's just overdevelopment for that small space. I accept that parking has been provided or is appear to be provided, but it is cramped. There's very narrow access to that. And the side road, if there is no vehicles parked, you would just about get an emergency vehicle down there. And it is correct down the end, there are a number of flats where you have disabled and other people living down there. So that is a real, real concern. I absolutely agree with the point about overlooking people's residence where you've got clear views straight into living rooms. I accept we could argue whether it's fifteen metres or nineteen metres. But if you've got somebody looking into, who can look into your premises, I think it's irrelevant. I think it's an evasion of their privacy. I note, and I don't know whether it can be commented on later, the last point from the parish was the inaccuracies in the planning statement. I mean, people always refer to the schools in Allfold and we continuously say there isn't a school in Allfold. And it says, "The village provides a wide choice of business, shopping, leisure and transport hubs." I certainly wouldn't say Allfold is a bustling village with those sort of facilities. It has facilities that just about cope. You know, the sports facilities open at eight o'clock at night if someone turns up. And if nobody turns up by half nine, they'll close it. The shop down the road now closes in the afternoon. So I think sometimes those sort of comments make it like it's a very sustainable place. Well, it's not quite that. Again, I note from Southern Water, and I know it would be subject to a condition, but the issues with the water, because obviously it's on the border of Thames Water going into Southern Water. And we know that there's only a limited amount of, that they will take by licence from Thames. So these are real issues that we've received again. When you look at the letters of objection, I think there's some very, very valid points. Proposal is out of keeping the surrounding area and the style of housing. I would agree. You know, when those four houses were designed and only just recently finished, a lot of work went into making sure that they fitted the design of Allfold in that part of the road. And this current proposal, I don't think does that at all. I think, as our speaker said, that they've sent a note with some photographs on. And I hope all my colleagues have had a chance to look at those photographs to see the impact that will bring. I mean, I think, I'll wrap up because I'll let other people have their say and I can always come back. I think it's a site that needs to be developed, but I think it's the wrong proposal. It's overbearing, it's not the right proposal. And I think the applicant really needs to do a far more appropriate proposal for Allfold. I'll hear my colleagues' comments first. Thank you.
councillor Worszewski.
Thank you, Chairman. This really is a missed opportunity. It's such a shame because it's a brownfield site that's clearly crying out to be developed. And here we've had an application put forward. It just hasn't taken the maximum advantage of doing something on that site that's in keeping with its surroundings. So we've lost an opportunity to do something on that site. I agree completely with the comments made from Allfold Parish Council. And in principle, nobody could argue that the site doesn't need a form of redevelopment. Unfortunately, what they've done is they've gone for the maximum, it's out of keeping, overcrowding. You know, I'm just very disappointed not to be able to support the officer's recommendation on this occasion because I think there's a better use of this site that's in keeping with what's currently there. And just a missed opportunity, such a shame. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else wish to comment? We'll move on to the recommendation then. So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to nine and informatives one to seven as set out on the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please?
That's zero.
Okay, and those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, unanimous.
Right, so that's failed. So we need reasons for the refusal, please.
I mean, I think the main point I made is it's an overdevelopment of the site. I'm sure you can put some adequate words around that, if that helps.
Officers?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we're happy to, I've actually got some wording right together. But yeah, I think it was similar to probably the proposal you considered earlier, sort of over-intensive subdivision of the site. And we can put that into some words. Sorry, I haven't quite put that together yet. But I also noted some comments around overlooking. Is that something you want to include as well?
If I may, Chair, I was just about to come to that. Yes, clearly, that was one of my concerns with the properties to the east and the west. But yeah, if something about overlooking and amenities and the loss of privacy, that would be very good as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor Dennis. So I think we've got two reasons. One would be by reason of the subdivision, overdevelopment. You're concerned on those points and we will put the policies down a bit more meat to that reason. And the second one being unacceptable overlooking of private amenity space of the neighbouring property. The only one point I would add is that property to property, so window to window, is... The only one point I would add is that property to property, so window to window, is, it's right on the margin of the twenty-one metres which is recommended in our guidance and we regularly use, so I would suggest it was an overlooking concern regarding the private amenity space rather than directly to windows, because that is our guidance saying twenty-one metres or more, that would be acceptable based on what we use as guidance.
Yeah, thank you, chair, I'd be grateful if that could be included for the amenity area as well as into the windows, thank you.
councillor Gray, you wish to add?
Yeah, I wanted to come in on this overlooking, and I think it's the question, there are flats upstairs, so you're talking about a different sort of overlooking than just a house, I don't know whether that requires the same distance, but because they're talking about two flats on the second level, the amount of overlooking there is considerably more than it would be if it was two masonettes.
Thank you, chairman, thank you councillor Gray, yes, that's a very good point, I mean, that guidance is used, we haven't got a specific guidance for new dwellings, it's the residential extensions guidance we rely on, so we can combine that and use that in there, so, thank you.
So, members, with those reasons for refusal, are we agreed that this application should be refused permission?
Agreed.
Thank you. That closes the meeting, thank you all for your attention and attendance.